Like our other utilities, it continually is being replenished as it's being used. And it's not as huge of a burden financially on families as if it were to show up on the tax roll. It's easier to come up with $10 a month than it is to come up with 120 at the end of the year. For some families. So to me, it is, it is easy.
Yeah, I mean, four, four hundred.
Four hundred.
Two thirds of our assessment. Two thirds of our assessment stormwater related guys. That's simple. Maybe a little more.
It'll be a dedicated.
So it's big bucks.
If big bucks, it's gonna be big trouble for us if we don't do it right.
You'd agree with the $400, but I'm just saying it's easier for people to come up with little chunks and make that a big chunk at the end of the year. That was my point.
Mrs. Clark? I'm gonna agree with Mr. Guy. I don't think that's an appropriate approach because paying all the assessment at one time, people are prone, realize that they have to pay it all. And then all of a sudden, they're gonna, they're gonna think it's another special assessment if we separate it. And I'm gonna give you an example. The water thing that was sent out with the different things, I got calls because it was confusing. They had to go down a row to understand instead of it should have been simply because you're talking, you know, residents don't understand everything, so, you know, the complicated water system. And it should have gone across rather than having to go down. So that all of one year was there, this next year was there. So you're gonna make it more confusing for them when they won't understand what's going on. And paying the one assessment year, they understand that.
Well, the thing that I think that they're going to see and really enjoy is come April 15th or November, I guess, when the bill comes out and they have the option to pay early and lower the amount they pay, is that where we're hitting for 622 or whatever the number is, that number is going to drastically drop. Drastically drop.
But I think most people will say, hey, they took this out of here, but I'm gonna get billed in this, so we're.
Yet it gets back into the deal. Paying it every two months is a lot simpler than writing a paycheck for $600.
Maybe, I mean, that's.
Just to discuss that, because we got the phone calls and stuff here too. And many people, when they got their tax bill, a lot of them thought it was a bill due. When you tell them it's in their mortgage, oh, because, and I'm not saying it's a good thing or a bad thing, most people are okay with paying things by month or bi-monthly rather than at once. And it is, it's, it's over $200 a year is the stormwater. So your assessment wouldn't go down $200 a year on the tax roll. Yes, the money's going somewhere, but it'd be a constant roll. We'd be able to constantly do projects, be a constant funding source that we can complete, replenish, and go with. And I know it's getting paid one way or another, but it also could decrease its timeline on two. And it's on a, it's on a utility bill sometimes. Some people may not, a lot of people are.
It's not on everybody's mortgage, John. Not everybody has it.
I'm not saying any of this is for every person. It's just.
Many people don't have it.
But those were, I mean, we received a lot of calls too. The second you told somebody it's on their mortgage, you say, okay.
But the key is, is whether you pay it on every two months or you pay it annually, I don't really care what year it is. I do agree with Martin. For operation maintenance of our system, it would be better if we had a cash flow that we're generating that money every two months. Just, it's good business. In fact, likewise on the water sewer, notwithstanding some of the problems we have, it'd be better if we were billing that monthly instead of every two months. But it is what it is. None of this discussion has anything to do with Article 5.
Completely went off rails.
None of it has to do with Rule 5, which is the immediate problem.
Well, it's Rule 5 we don't have in front of us.
Yeah, that's what was made about.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was thinking, never mind. Well, this is Rule 6. Correct?
Yes.
So when you said Rule 5, I was thinking.
I think that was the name, it was Chapter 6. No, it's Chapter 6. It's Chapter 6, but I thought it was referred to as Rule 5 years ago. Whatever. Anyway, it's this that's in front of us, the interconnectivity issue. That is the issue.
Yes, I guess the backup in the minutes hopefully gave the board a flavor of analysis and the rationale and the multiple discussions that the board held to come up with this document. And I guess the question is, from a standpoint of just workshopping, is if the board can discuss it and indicate what they want to, whether they want to have further staff direction later on, like addressing it, looking at it, revisiting it, or what the concerns are.
And Tony, it gets even further because Russ has ran into this and Steve has had it and Steve's people at Infomart are pulling their hair out. They don't have an answer. And they can't come up with an answer as to why they're doing what it is they're doing other than the fact it's the way it was done before. Well, they track back to the, to the 90s that they were here first, the Severn Trent. So I find that being a weak excuse, but the issue is, is that in Gateway, every commercial user pays an assessment of 5.8 times the residential assessment. Period. That is not the way it's calculated at all in Pelican Reserve. And I'm talking about, I believe the last calculation was over a quarter of a million dollars of lost revenue was being, was lost in Pelican Reserve because of that methodology. And nobody can come up with where and why and how the commercials over there are being billed differently than our rules.
I guess the question I have, when you say, as I understand it, that the allocation of ERCs, ERUs, equivalent residential connections, equivalent residential units for commercial properties are given 5.8 ERCs or ERUs per acre.
Right.
Correct. That's the general premise.
Correct. And then that is multiplied times the residential rate, for example.
Correct. Per ERU rate.
Correct.
And I guess the question is, when the various managers, you have had Severn Trent, EMS, when they have gone through, prepared your lead book in your assessment roll, the question is number one, have they applied that properly?
That's the issue.
And number one. Number two, I think last year when we went through the exercise with Russ and with Steven Bloom and with Severn Trent, Infomart, to look at various parcels to determine whether the allocation of ERUs was appropriate. And what I'm saying, the allocation of ERUs, 5.8 times acreage, one ERU per condo, one ERU per single family home, et cetera. Was that appropriate? And I believe we, they spent a lot of time going through that analysis. I think this board had a couple of headaches from listening to that discussion.
I believe Russ is, Russ is beyond that. He's got a new.
But what I'm saying, that was done. So I guess the question is, I think that was just gateway proper. I don't know if we looked at public reserve at that time. And I can't recall.
Rest, rest.
So I guess that's, the threshold question is, is the current approach being applied properly? But then you have Russ working on an alternative approach he's gonna provide to y'all on a go-forward basis, as I understand it, which you may or may not want to implement this year. And if you do, then you go to the hearings, the educational program. So I mean, when's he finished with his report?
He will be at the second meeting at the latest.
In April?
Yes.
And I guess as part of that discussion, as I understand it, Russ will look at this particular Chapter 6 and its application, maybe recommend a recommendation as to modifying that too. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, this particular piece, there's certain areas within what I would consider the rules that we could collectively agree pretty easily of modifications. When you start getting into this area, I think it's definitely more complex. I think in some areas, it's personal. And it has tremendous impact to our current state. Any modifications to that could be very disruptive, I think, in our, in our board setting. What, what I would recommend in sections of our business rules that we would like to amend or evaluate, and I have no problem, I think the rules should be evaluated regularly, that we should look to have a consultant or someone outside of the board review and be able to come back with interpretation and then options.
Russ is doing this. We authorized Russ to do that. We went to him and asked him for a special contract change to be.
Well, but I think, I think, yes, I think part of Russ's evaluation and his recommendations would, would definitely be part of, of the bigger picture. But I see it as also there's other, there's other areas that this could potentially influence outside of just what, what Russ's scope is.
You know, is, the, the issue is, well, there's two issues. One, the issue of interconnectivity. Do you wanna stick with that? If you wanna stick to that, the issue is, do you wanna stick to it the way it was defined? Because the way it was defined, we're not sticking to when we do it. That's the problem. We've got two areas of gateway that are being billed that qualify for being billed the same way Pelican Reserve does. And they're not. They're not. They're overpaying. And it's not right. We've got to correct that. And it's gonna get really complicated in the next year or two because they're gonna turn in from developer contributions to single-family home contributions.
Yeah, I guess, I guess part of what the board, I want to do is, and I can't recall if Russ was tasked with, who knew he has this, is part of looking at the assessment for these tasks, but making recommendations as to how this can be applied right now or should have been applied, and make recommendations for any change. I don't know.
That's my understanding of what we ask him to do.
Yes, I'm under that. But that, my point is, we need, we need a consultant or someone to justify their recommendation and then for us to, to look at it. Because I don't wanna get in debate other, I mean, honestly, around this piece because one, I've read through the background, I've read this, but I wasn't around when, when the discussions were and I just, I need outside help to tell me what's right.
What happened is, what complicates this, is in 2004, when it started, in 2005, when it was approved, nobody thought of these issues. They never came up. If we would have been in 2005 doing what we should have been doing, we should have been re-reviewing what Johnson Engineering gave us in 1986, and that is our entire assessment methodology. And we were way beyond the original road of gateway and 1,000 ERUs. We're up to, what, almost 10,000 ERUs based on this archaic system that we use. And it's high time it's gotta be fixed because it's not a fair and equitable system.
You started. Come here. I had a comment on our article, the check thing. Go ahead. Thank you. On page Agenda 10. So I can tell you what I'm thinking.
What's page 10?
Agenda 10. Page Agenda 10. The section, you see. Do we still have to, very simple, sweep the street gateway? Or exactly counting?
Do we still what?
Do the street sweeping. Street sweeping.
We don't, we don't sweep all gateway unless something spills or something happens out there.
All that's operational maintenance costs that we don't do anymore.
So that should be out of this rule?
Yeah, the new one would address that. The only thing that we have on the new contract is we have landscaping, we have streetlights, and we have street signs, and we have sidewalks. That's all we have.
So that should be out of the rules here then? That's what it should be?
Yeah, if the rules are changed, that'd have to be, be caught.
That's what I wanted.
Anything else?
No, that was it.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
We have discussed, or listened to, at least four and I think maybe five different items here this afternoon on this. And they get rather confusing, to say the least. Now, Mr. Tinkelman, our consultant, may have a perfect solution or an imperfect solution. But for us to sit around this table and yak about it, I don't think adds anything to the, to the, to the, to our education.
I agree.
What happened in '04 or '05 when Pelican Reserve was just getting started is a little import now. We, we need to get a, get a, get a professional and as Mr. Banks said, a consultant possibly to, to review what, what makes sense and whether 5.8 ERUs for commercial makes any sense, I don't know. But certainly, there's gotta be a standard, there's gotta be a standard in the industry. We're not sitting here all by ourselves.
There is bill. That's why we have retained Russ Wire to do exactly what, he is the consultant guy doing exactly what you're talking about.
Okay, that's, that's wonderful. But then why are we standing, why aren't we sitting here yakking about it?
Well, Chris.
And basically, I was gonna say in hours, now we can move on, but it was really just to get the discussion started and look at it because some of these issues are very complicated. We may wanna address some of them this year, but when Russ comes in and gives his report and then how that's gonna impact our budget, and that's why we're starting the budget in April this year, then we can get some more direction, how y'all like to move forward or if we need to bring in a secondary consultant to address some of these issues. But this is really was a warm-up and.
We said this.
Well, you warmed us up.
Just to refresh your memory, we said that a year ago and I deferred that we would do it this year.
Right.
I'm not gonna defer.
And that was smart. That was the smartest thing you've ever.
So it will resurrect itself next month.
Pelican Reserve was 250,000.
I think that, I think one of the things is about this is that when Russ turns in and he explains to us or gives his, his ideas and his professional opinion, it's not like we haven't already laid eyes on some of these rules and problems that we have. So that's why this is good.
Keep in mind, Russ is also working with Steve.
I just have one comment. I've been told all along that the study will result in a revenue neutral position. There's nothing that's changing, is it?
Oh, yes. Definitely.
So it's no longer revenue neutral?
No. Not with.
Yeah, that's news to me.
The assessment methodology was, unless I'm talking about a different topic.
Yeah, I.
But we were told that the assessment methodology, when it was a portion fairly, was gonna be revenue neutral.
If you use the same methodology for every bit of collection, whether it be parks and recreation, landscaping, and/or stormwater, that would be probably true. But we're not, he's not proposing to do that. He's looking at, last I taught, was possibly having as many as three methodologies. One for parks and recreation, one for landscaping and streets and roads, and then the last one for stormwater management. One, stormwater management essentially being the same as the system we have, only instead of using the hypothetical 5.8, he's actually going to calculate it for each and every commercial class, and then he's gonna divide the residential class into various types, like whether they have a 60-foot front footage, 50-foot front footage, 40-foot.
I understand, but we need to be hearing this from our consultant.
He told us that the last time he was here, when he showed it on the pictures.
He did, but I think we should wait to get all the explanation from him at a later date.
Well, he asked the question. I was answering his question.
I just thought that the methodology was supposed to be neutral.
Not necessarily.
Okay, that's all I needed enough. Thank you.
So I'll move us on to the tentative budget schedule.
I was just handing a couple things out to you guys to go over and, and one of them is the budget schedule, just to show you kind of where we're looking at going. Kind of bumped everything up about a month. So we'll start, we'll start here next month putting everything together and then we plan to have the budget hopefully prepared by us and, and May, and then to you guys in June. And basically, it's just to avoid having to schedule any of the out-of-the-ordinary meetings, keep it all to the board meetings. I know some of the workshops last year were quick, so combined a couple of them.
You can pass it down as pools, though.
Yeah, so that's the first thing. The second thing is, because it was being discussed here in a couple of the other meetings, some of the pay ranges that were approved, I handed you guys out, which is in the board book, our current staffing schedule, the approved ranges that we have. And the ones that are highlighted blue, they're board-approved. We actually have board-approved job descriptions, the pay ranges, all that stuff. The other ones, we kind of, that are not highlighted, those are just kind of internal that, you know, staff has come up with with the positions as time has gone on. Just kind of put this all out there for when it comes up in discussion here in the next couple of months, so you guys can kind of take a look, see where we're at.
Can you put the four or five other columns on this sheet here and then it'd be perfect?
What four or five?
Splitting it up into enterprise and the other channels.
Yeah, we have that one in the budget, but I didn't put that in there yet because I don't even know where you're going with that, so.
Yeah, that's, that, that is basic to do.
Well, and it's all, and it's all been getting changed, I don't wanna say significantly, but as positions have been changing recently with some of the field guys and stuff like that. Things have been shifting and we haven't even gotten to the point of discussing those.
But you understand my position. It is critical that the '70, '20, '10 be based upon factual information instead of pulling it out the backside. And the only way I know of doing it is you and Chris sitting down and taking every position and assigning them. How much is admin? How much is roads? How much is utilities? How much is parking wreck? And how much is stormwater?
And just to cover that real quick, and I've been talking briefly with like Paul over at Infomart, is the way I like to do it is come up with a number, whether it's based on a percentage or it's a number, because a lot of our invoices for like all the operational administrative things, when you pay them, they cut a check percentage-wise from three different funds, three different bank accounts. They do that. They do that with other communities because they have multiple general funds. It's kind of weird for us because part of it's utilities, so is what we're kind of looking at is to see if it's okay if we can determine that when we're talking with Russ and come up with a percentage or a fee that essentially at the beginning of each year would just be a transfer, basically fee. Enterprise fund would transfer the amount that, you know, for running out of here, Pelican, their amount would be transferred instead of going through these weird allocations.
Assume under this new system of our enterprise fund, where we have been told we now have water, sewer, and irrigation separate, we gotta put the percentage of your salary in those deals also.
Which makes it three times as complex as it is now.
Yeah, and there's gotta be an easier way.
We did Ronald Peters' pay call in the past, but it's not fair.
But it's something that we'll look at because now is kind of time to look at that. We're kind of doing the assessment methodology and if there's an easier way to do a transfer or something like that. Just administratively, it would be so much easier for multiple parties.
The upfront fee, pull it from the, from the accounts, load it into your, your pay account.
The budget's approved, those amounts are approved, so let's just.
And if, maybe we could, we could also look at it as a, instead of enterprise fund or an allocation, the enterprise fund is gonna play pay gateway, a franchise fee to operate within the borders of gateway. So we pay a brand, thank you, put this operating detail, the operations, the CDD, here's the cash payment that happens to be equal to whatever that budget.
And then there's other things like Pelican, they pay a percentage of some of the fee. So if we come up with an amount, again, it'd be a transfer for them. And there's other things in regards to that that we'll get to discussing later in the upcoming months. But the other thing I handed out was just because recently, and I put this, I'm giving this out to you guys just so you can have it to look at it and think about, we're having these discussions, no action to be taken. But we've been having, and really more is what's led to this, is I've had just one or two people come to me kind of with staffing, slight staffing issues at the pool. And I gone, I've gone through, the pools, the pool staff has been keeping headcounts since 2015. Last year, they started keeping two-hour headcounts. And I kind of went through, as you see, I charted it out, just so you could get kind of a look at it. I went through, I looked at all the other surrounding areas, the counties, cities, their hours, how they operate, and would like to consider changing the pool hours to be more in line with the county, city, kind of a nine-to-five thing. And the reason for that is that we currently, for each day, we have two shifts. So there's two shifts for each day the pool's open, but we have three people. I've been here, I think, a year and a half, and they were trying to hire a pool person since before I started. We got one that we've had for a little while. Can't get anymore, and there's, I think, a couple reasons. We've interviewed people and things like that, but a lot of people who wanna work this position are retired. They want a part-time schedule. And we're very lucky with the situation we have now, that we have a full-time person, so it's a full-time position. But then our other part-time position, she's been great, she wants the hours, should work. But if we were to lose one, we would be in very hot water to cover this current, you know, in, in the summer, it's 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Refresh us with our hours versus where the other people are.
So, and if we can reduce these hours, and it's still to accommodate, I'm not trying to knock people out of the pool if they don't wanna use it, but as you can see, you know, it's kind of the nine-to-fives when everybody's there. I went up there, I met with some of the pool staff, things to consider, and this would allow one person to work one day. So if somebody has to call off, we have not just one other person that hopefully they're available or something like that. And it's also, I mean, we've been paying our full-time person and our part-time people overtime, so.
This is the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard in my life, that we were in Florida and you cannot find pool attendants. I mean, I bought a car based on lifeguarding during the summer and the winter at the country club and at the beach, and you can't tell me in, that we cannot find someone that can be at the pool. We don't even require them to have any certification.
Well, here's kind of the problem with that. They are pool attendants that also dump dog doo-doo bags.
It's an hourly wage.
Exactly.
We need to have a conversation about this offline because, for one, reducing the hours of the pool during any time of the year when it is 85 degrees on average, and now we're getting to a point where the sun doesn't even go down until 7:30, you and a close to the pool at four, I think that's ridiculous. And I'm a big advocate, I think that we're, you know, I think the pool is completely underutilized. If you look at these numbers, I mean, there's a, there's a small pocket of individuals that are probably, 80% of them drive these numbers on a daily basis. If you look at variation per user, right? So I think we need to go back and look at, one, is, is the model that we have, does it work? And can we, do we have to have someone sitting at the pool during hours of, of operation?
And I, trust me, I've considered these, and we don't have to have somebody sitting there all the time. Now, there's reasoning for it because your parent, you know, kids can be jumping on chairs, so.
No, I did, and we don't have to get into that debate, I'm just saying.
But I've also looked at too, the county, when we're talking about wages, the way, when people come in here, because I've been in a handful of interviews with people, when you tell them what you gotta do, it's $12 an hour, you don't hear from them. The county pays $11.64 and they have to be a certified lifeguard.
I'd give somebody to give you $20 to reap back now for $10 an hour.
And, I mean, if we can get them, we can get them.
It'll be there tomorrow.
We're just having a very hard time and it's, you know.
And his name is?
Her name is his wife.
Yeah.
I got a 17-year-old that will sit in that pool from 2:00 to 7:00 o'clock every day for $10 an hour.
You can't promote, hire anyone, so.
Hypothetically. It's a hypothetical.
He might be.
But essentially, what I'm trying to get out is, is we can do it and it may require more money, but I'm trying to figure out for the whole budget, period, coming up, this, this could be a $40,000 to $50,000 swing of keeping it open, funding.
I know where you're coming from, and I applaud, I'm just kind of venting a little bit because this is a, I think it's.
We have made some changes.
Can I go back to you in just a second? I just wanna ask, are the pool hours normally dawn to dusk, correct? So in the winter time, it's short.
Well, they, well, they, we have three different signs we put out for three different, we have 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM, and changes three times a year.
Okay. I just curious.
So we're open a lot longer than anybody else.
Each pool's open eight, seven to eight hours, we're open 1.13.
Say it again.
13 hours.
We're open 13 in the average.
It is, it's eight. Seven, eight. And, and the thing is too, oh, sorry.
All right, Kathy had a question or a comment.
Okay. I know you've tried to get someone to work, okay, but you haven't used all means. I mean, have you contacted all the HOAs? Have they put, been able to put it out that maybe there is someone out there who would like to work?
Well, and here, probably next week, since tomorrow's Friday, we're gonna put it in the lifestyles. I believe that's what it's called, lifestyles magazine. And most of the applicants that we get are typically people who go to the pool. And they're the ones who wanna work there.
I know if we needed it.
Craigslist too, right?
Just have somebody check all of it.
You're gonna put it on Craigslist too. Okay, that, now, can I go to the staffing plan draft? Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. I find this little discrepancy here where we're gonna hire an intern, who's only an I find this little discrepancy here where we're gonna hire an intern, who's only an intern, for fifteen dollars an hour. When our recreational leader at the swimming pool gets only twelve eighty an hour. So I think that there should be adjustment, if you're gonna hire an intern, we probably will not have the same duties as the recreational leader.
Who are you looking at, Kathy?
On page.
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two in the agenda, I'm sorry.
But it's not in what he gives.
Yeah.
No, no.
No, it's, it was what's in the board.
It's what's in the book that we're gonna discuss.
And fifteen is what, that's, I almost consider it's, it's almost like a placeholder, that's been in there in the budget for years, and it's kind of like it just kept rolling. If we wanted that, and that could actually be two positions, it was just, it's honestly kind of a placeholder for the fifteen.
But I think the recreation leader, I think we should, I mean, she's only getting eighty cents more than the part-timer, so I think that should be considered up. And I'm gonna use a quote from Mr. Banks last week, that we should be sensitive to staff, wages, benefits, and compensation. That was quoted from you last week, so I think being sensitive that she does, is full-time, and only make, is only making eighty cents more than a part-timer, I think that should be reconsidered.
I applaud you for asking for a raise for.
I, I agree with you.
Whether I agree with it or not, but that's.
Yeah, I do agree with you, it's, it's something we look at. You also have to understand to us and to the employee that a full-time position that's receiving twelve to fifteen thousand dollar a year benefits would want money.
But she still has all the same bills, the part-timer has to pay too, the driving, the being there.
Right, I, I get it.
And I know the work they do because I've seen them, what do you call it, sand, the umbrella stands so they can repaint them, okay? So they're doing actually work.
Oh, I, I know. You're gonna have AOC here, if you don't watch out.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just couple of comments, first of all, the board administration worked on changing hours of the pool three, four, five years ago, I forget exactly when. And it can, it can end up being a touchy situation because there are some folks who like to use that pool darn near every day. And secondly, we have just spent a hundred and I can't tell you how many thousand dollars.
Hundred and nineteen.
Thank you. Improving that thing, that pool, excuse me, and, and, and I think that if we advertise in form. Show our residents where their money has gone, we're gonna get a lot more usage out of that pool. Now, if getting more usage out of the pool is what you want, I think we could get it, because, largely because of the money that we've spent on it.
I could address that, actually, well, yes, there are, the, the people who use the pool are almost, they're kind of like the same people every day. And you have the two to sometimes three people that come in the morning, they're there from seven to seven thirty, they're gone. Then nobody's really there till, like, when the water aerobics goes on till about nine thirty. Then we have the sun people who are gone between three thirty and four. After that, there's sometimes one, two, maybe three people there after that. And a lot of times, especially in the summer, they literally sit there with nobody at the pool because of the storms. So I agree with you, and if, if the target is to get more people there, we can do that, we just spent a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on the pool, I understand that. However, we would only lose three customers, and in three years, that hundred and twenty thousand dollars paid for.
But why don't you just, so when it comes in the morning, whoever's first here, they open up the gate, people go in, they swipe their card, they go in for the hour in the morning. They don't need to have someone there watching them swim laps for an hour and a half, someone comes in at nine during your peak hours for water aerobics. Because you want to make sure they have someone on site in, in the event of something happens. And then you tailor people that are there for the peak hours, and then at, you know, let's say five o'clock or whatever, the, the pool attendee leaves. And then someone comes around at seven and locks the gate or whatever, I mean, it's like, I can't believe we're spending fifteen minutes talking about the pool that has less than sixty people there a day.
And we, we can look at that, and we, it's been talked about, we have people who are here at seven in the morning, we have people who leave, who can lock up.
I mean, we don't have anyone sitting at the soccer field, we have two thousand people there on any weekend, but we got someone sitting at the pool who's doing what?
I agree, well, the, the only thing that has to be done there. The only thing that has to be done there is a water sample, which we have the staff in our field to do it, they sample every day. So this would be eliminating one of our full-timers and a couple of other positions, but.
Nothing that insurance says that we have to have a person there.
As far as I know, we're doing.
If I were a contractor, we've had consultations and discussions with our carrier in the past, and might, can add some more. About posting signs, you know, pools unattended, no lifeguard on duty, swimming at your own risk, all kinds of, if I were a contractor, that's what we've done.
Uh, yeah, there, I know there's at least two of there, because I saw them when I.
We may try to double check with our carriers, they're, they're really good about giving us guidance, they always say the more signs, the better, I think.
The person that's there at the seven morning shift and the person that's there at the seven evening shift, they opening close?
No, it's two shifts per day.
That's, that's, that's what I mean, it's two different people, but they, they perform that function, so there's no.
Open the gate and close the gate.
What you're saying is there's no reason why some other staff positions, some other staff person simply opens the door and closes the door.
Yeah.
And.
And if I may, the, the impetus is that we're not trying to cut pool hours or do anything, we're just trying to show you where your money's going.
Yeah, no, I get it, I understand the root, the root of the issue is not the amenities, it's the cost associated to maintaining it and keeping someone, I, I completely get it, I understand.
And we went to, just in the past two weeks, we went to a full-blown advertising and in the paper and Craigslist that they haven't done before. So we're taking that route also, going to Florida Gulf Coast University and even the charter school to look at high school kids that they want.
Yeah, I mean, and right now, when, probably if you look at the summertime when kids are out, I would imagine that.
That needs some supervision.
Yeah.
You know, some of those.
But, I mean, again, I think there's, there's even ways to monetize this even, even more, but I'm not gonna jump into that.
I'm trying to figure this out, we have three employees, one full-time, two part-time, and one open part-time.
Yep.
What's the hours the two part-timers work, one work in the morning and one work in the afternoon?
Well, we, we have one who, yeah, we have, we have one who basically, you know, they're only available twice a week. And then the other one fills in for all the rest, so when our full-timers are not there and.
Well, if the pool recreation leader is there for eight hours, alls we're filling in is two in the front and two in the back?
They overlap right now.
Why?
Well, it's, it's how they've been.
So we have two people there at the same time that we're paying.
Because the supervisions, our supervisor will come here to the office to kind of do some of those other things.
There's overlap, but they're not sitting at the, they're not sitting alongside together, they're doing something.
Right, and sometimes that can go over and over.
And I'll just say, thank you, I'm sure that you can come up with a reasonable way to resolve any of these issues, whether it's cutting hours or putting signs up. And I'm gonna move the, the schedule that you gave us for the budget, I really like it, thank you very much, I think we can stick with that quite easily.
Yeah, and you just, you do those splits for the percentages, that would give us everything we need on one form.
And we, we have made it clear that we, we do want to make sure that you guys are doing staffing assessment, budgeting this year, you know, okay.
You mean the increases?
Yeah, or just, you know, look at head count, what you have, what you need.
Oh, we, yeah, we already got.
You're going through a, a head count and resource planning budgeting.
Yeah, we have. This is currently what we have now, we're probably gonna, this is our, just about our latest and greatest, we're probably gonna have maybe one more, that'll be on the.
What is that position?
It'll be in the utilities.
In the utilities, so if we take and get this updated alone with the splits on the, with, what they're doing.
Yeah.
We're ready to be able to discuss budgeting.
Yeah, and it'll, it'll unfortunately increase your fifty-five a little bit.
Mrs. Flaherty, you had a question?
Yes, just to clarify, Mr.?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Guy was a little confused, okay? Seven o'clock in the morning, people come in and do laps.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay, they probably come in and do them before they go to work.
Possibly.
Yeah, they do, okay.
One of them rides bike twenty-five miles.
Those are.
No, I'm just telling you, I know that they do.
And I, I get it, I know.
And then at nine thirty, the water aerobics come in.
Yep.
Okay, that's the difference. I was just, he, he was a little bit confused, so I wanted to have us.
I'm gonna move us on to the consent agenda, we have two items, three A and B, we have a contract spreadsheet and minutes from March seventh.
Are we closing workshop?
We're out of the workshop and into the regular meeting, right?
We are, finally.
Good thing we didn't tell those ladies to stay in town.
If you'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda, Madam Chairman.
I would, please.
Uh, you have it, a move, approval of consent agenda, items A, three A and B.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it moves us to pond maintenance and Pelican Preserve, four, four.
Four, four.
And these are just standard yearly contracts with the Pelican Preserve for maintenance of the ponds with optogenics and woods and wetlands.
Move approval.
Budgeted and ready to go, wait, we have one more, it'll come in the next meeting.
Discussion.
Can we have a motion in a second, Mr.?
Motion in a second.
Yeah, the.
Motion second.
I'm certainly gonna vote for this, but what I don't understand is is that, that reading some of the correspondence going back and forth. Did we just forget to get these approved a month, two months ago, because it sounds like that some of the vendors have been frustrated because they either weren't getting paid. Or threatened they weren't gonna be paid, or whatever the deal was, did these just fall through the cracks?
Well, one thing we found out is on our contract spreadsheet, we didn't have those listed, and the vendors didn't send in a proposal in January. And we just didn't catch that on our end, so all of a sudden, but what we did is we issued a temporary, you know, POs for a month or two. So that they caught up, and I wanted to bring what you're seeing here as a PO that I issued, and then this is for the rest of the year.
So these, these are the vendors that Pelican's been using, Bob, the ones you've been using, will they, are we starting to do twelve-month contract detective immediately? Or is there going to be a retroactive deal here?
They've never stopped service, way off one guy that.
So there's no reason why it just wouldn't be a retroactive continuation?
No, we, because what we did is we issued a PO just to cover that few months, and it didn't go over that amount, and then what they're getting is the other nine months now.
Another question.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the last one is the informational items that was P-PAC and Stony Brook minutes from several months. And those are really informational, so if nobody has any comments or there's questions on those, I will move to supervisor comments. Mrs. Flaherty.
I have a few.
Go ahead.
All right, um, first of all, I'm gonna ask Tyler a question.
Sure.
Tyler, in our minutes of last month, Mr. Nelson was supposed to come back with information, I was just wondering if you have this information as soon as I get to the minutes.
CIP development plan.
That's what he was asked to do.
Now, this was, I put it right here, okay, bridge demolition and decking of Pelican Preserve, this item was moved from the agenda, we go back to another meeting, no, that's not here.
Yeah, that's not Tyler.
Okay.
Sorry, you have it on that one, I didn't know.
He'd like to do it, but.
I'm sorry, that's what I was.
Just answer the question, so.
Yeah, there was, I can't find what I circled.
You want me to move on and come back?
No, that's all right.
It was a CIP project that were.
Yeah, maybe it was that.
I think he's planning on bringing that as a staff report to the first meeting next month.
Still, we playing for the CIP projects?
I can answer that one if you'd like me to.
That's okay, if it's coming back next month, that's okay.
It's, it's done, it just wasn't done before last Tuesday, so it'll be on the next agenda.
Oh, I know, I have it right written here.
Okay.
Okay, it's the LDO on the first set of lakes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it was stated to have verified that they were done?
Uh, they're not. They're not done, no, uh, we gave Chris a proposal that about, I don't know, last week, and he just gave us the PO, so we are moving forward with getting the permits in hand.
Okay, thank you, that's, that was my question.
And, and they also gave us a discount on the pricing.
All right, I'm not finished yet, okay.
Go ahead.
All right.
Don't be, all right?
Yeah, I'm finished with you, I just, I had to write, I write my notes down, and I'm sorry.
I'm wrong.
Newsletter, where are we with the newsletter? I mean, we just had some residents complain and.
Done absolutely nothing with it.
Okay, we are supposed to.
We are working on the survey, hoping to get that out with the consumer confidence report that we're, we're required to send to the residents, so we're gonna put that in with the consumer.
Because I said I would work with somebody with the newsletter, I did bring in some templates, okay? Now, the other thing is minutes, we have complained about the minutes and nothing has been done, so I took it upon myself, I'm sorry, to listen to the, um.
Recording.
Recordings, right, and I can tell you what are some of our problems are. Okay, I wrote them down. I also just took to see how long it takes to type them too, all right? Now, I moved all your microphones, I don't know if you realized that when I came in, I moved them all because you can't hear people. Margaret, you need to talk like five times louder, okay? I'm not, I'm not trying to be negative about this.
She can only go forward.
My husband will love it, okay.
Can I stop critique myself?
Can we, can we vote on that?
The speakers, I moved that, and somebody moved it again, you cannot hear you, you fade in and out, you're not talking to at the.
Microphone.
Microphone, so it, so these are the problems.
I just moved it a second ago, I'll move it back.
Okay, this is the problem, so when she goes to type it, your voices are going in and out, and, I'm not gonna, I'll finish. And Chris, you need to use the voice you use in the office, not the voice you use here, I mean, the one you use here is not the same in the office, that one is more, um.
The teacher comes out.
Oh, my God.
What do you mean?
Okay, I'm, I'm not hitting, I'm gonna hit everybody.
Like I said, sorry, I kept on critiquing myself.
You want a spot?
You went your turn, mister, show critique.
Everybody gets his turn at the bar.
I talk too fast, I just turned my mic.
I'm not trying, I'm not trying.
This is good stuff, this is good.
I'm trying to make it so that when we get our minutes, there's less confusion, okay, the attorney, you have to talk directly in here and not turn around and, and decide to talk to somebody. And we're not getting that message, Mr. Banks, when you talk, you usually sit back instead of come forward.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Tickle, you usually, I moved it so that you were a little closer to it.
I think what she's saying is you talk too much. That's why the names are so long.
Yeah, I think you should take a vote on that.
I do have comments for the residents too.
Oh, boy.
All right, that you talk back there, and those noises, I know you don't realize it, affect the speak, the, the microphones, so we hear you. Now, the other thing is, you notice I did not bring any candy wrappers the past two meetings? Candy wrappers, you can hear you opening them up.
I don't know who she's talking to. Mr. Gepfer.
All you can hear are those candy wrappers, so when I do start bringing them back, I'm gonna suggest that you shut off your microphone or go underneath, yes, see, Mr. Guy, all right?
And, you know, we could have, there's probably someone we could bring in for doing a check of our system, well, that'd be a bad thing.
If I, if I could respond, all that might follow up, we've had someone come in, and part of, part of the problem is, is it's recording from there and not from the mics. So we need direct recording and also better mics.
Yeah, I mean, if our, if our system's antiquated, let's.
Well, we've had a person that every other place I've ever been, be here.
Okay.
Why can't you just be here?
Okay, to address, we've had two vendors in here who said they could do it, none of them got back to us, and they won't answer the phone calls. And they've both come across the same problem that I.
I thought we had a business.
We also have all these issues.
In Infomart doing it, why can't they just have a person there?
So anyway, we, we did think we originally had this solved, we were gonna have it in-house, we found our person, Diane was gonna be sitting in here doing minutes. And she decided she wanted to go guardian set.
That's why she quit.
We not accept.
May I make her comment?
We're still, I'm not gonna interrupt you, because I'm just gonna say, we're gonna do our best to have a staff position in here doing it. It seems like the easiest to fix, for many reasons.
Yes, I also went through the Stony Brook advisory minute, minute meeting, okay, and they have to make sure they close their door, okay, when they do theirs. I haven't done the Pelican Preserve one, okay, I haven't gone through theirs yet, I only had some time, but I will.
Save the best for later.
That's right, and so that, I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to make it more appropriate, okay, so that we can understand the minutes and they can do them.
Anything else?
Yeah, I got one more, the ADA, where are we with the ADA for the website?
Oh, can I add one thing to the minutes?
Sure, I, oh no, I'm sorry.
Other conversations going on lots of times when, yeah, the recording's going, which interferes with the topic that you're trying to listen to, and also, it's really helpful if a motion can always be restated to the person typing those minutes, it's really nice to have it restated exactly as it's supposed to be stated, and then, and they get the count and who opposed, it's just helpful. Those would be my two additions.
Oh, just one other thing, too, sometimes it might be helpful if you name who you are when you're talking, so that they don't miss, say the wrong person, okay? And now where's the ADA?
ADA.
That is, Tony and I had a phone call with him, about a show ago.
With the vendor.
A little bit ago.
Probably about two, three weeks ago, yes.
Yeah, and Tony had a couple of changes, and everything was okay with him, with Scott, except for there's a clause, you make something's better, that was kind of, they were, Tony and Scott were butt heads about liability with our, you know, if we change things, and he's, he's not going to hold ultimate responsibility if we go and upload a picture that's not compliant, and so we're trying to get right with that, and basically, you would ask for the most, what, aggressive, an example of the most aggressive agreement?
Yeah, and what I, what, as to pod communication conversation Mike and I had, after he received some input back from the vendor about their concern on the language I had struck, where they were totally, basically advocating any liability for any issues, I put some language in there to kind of, I thought, we'll go the other way, and we had, and the vendor was not happy with that. Mike and I and the vendor had a conversation about their concern, a revised language, I thought would be acceptable sort of middle ground, recognizing the vendor's concern that the district staff, district uploads a document or an item that's not ADA compliant, that that vendor's not responsible for us not following the guidelines.